Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the May 25, 2010, meeting of the Glendale City Council. I do want to apologize for having such a late start. We've had a grueling afternoon of closed-session meetings, so we will be starting about 15 minutes late. And I would like to call it to order, but before I take any further steps, I'd like to recognize the Redevelopment Agency Chair, Laura Friedman.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn the Redevelopment Agency closed session.
Please move that we adjourn from redevelopment. Second.
Okay, we are adjourned.
Thank you. Back to City Council. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmembers Drayman.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Aaron Najarian.
Here. Councilmember Drayman, would you please lead us in the flag solo?
I will, Mr. Mayor. If you don't, please stand. Place your right hand over your heart and join us in pledging allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. This weekend, we mark Memorial Day, a day to honor our fallen servicemen and women. Its origins are rooted in the aftermath of the Civil War, when all over this great nation, the loved ones of the fallen would assemble to decorate the graves of Union and Confederate dead. This weekend, as many will undoubtedly use this occasion for family gatherings and holiday rest, let us remember the true reason for this day and reflect upon it. Let us remember those who served and died in the jungles of Vietnam and Laos, and those who never made it back from the rugged hills of Korea, and those whose souls were taken from the living in Europe and the Pacific. As Abraham Lincoln stated in his most famous memorial address at the Field of Gettysburg, "It is for us the living, rather, to be dedicated here to the unfinished work which they who fought here have thus far so nobly advanced." We pray that our lives here in Glendale and service to our neighbors and the city become monuments to the sacrifice of our fallen. Let us keep in our hearts and minds the thousands of Americans who await news of their loved ones' return from Iraq or Afghanistan, or the families who received the news they feared most for whom we mark Memorial Day. We pray for peace today and always. Amen.
May we have your report?
The agenda for the May 25, 2010, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was postponed on Thursday, May 20, 2010, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Let's move to the next item.
Presentation and appointments at 3:00 on 3A is Agenda Preview for the meetings of June 1, 2010.
Thank you. Ms. Beers.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, for June 1, there are no Glendale Housing Authority business agenda items. For the Glendale Redevelopment Agency, we also don't have any business agenda items. At 2:30, we do have a joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Housing Authority, Director of Community Services and Parks regarding Pacific Park Pool Project. Another joint meeting of that afternoon of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Financing Authority. This is Director of Administrative Services regarding Amendment Number Two to Standby Purchase Agreement relating to the City of Glendale and the Glendale Financing Authority, Variable Rate Demand Certificates of Participation, and approving related legal documents. For the Glendale City Council meeting that evening at 6:00 PM, we have a number of consent items. Director of Public Works, approval of the final MAP tract for 12-unit new condominium subdivision at 1130 Campbell Street. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, additional funds for consulting services in the study and evaluation of the Shoal Canyon landfill gas compressor plant. Director of Community Services and Parks, stimulus funding awarded to the Senior Nutritional Meals Program. Director of Community Services and Parks, one-time-only funding award from Los Angeles County Department of Community and Senior Services. We have two items under Action Items. Director of Administrative Services, this is the third-quarter financial update and adjustments to the adopted 2009-2010 budget. And lastly, Director of Community Planning, update on the North Glendale Community Planning Report. And that, Mr. Mayor, concludes my report.
Thank you. Next item, please.
At 3B, we have a presentation of students from Egypt who have been studying at Glendale Community College.
Thank you. Ms. Ayad Mullins.
Ayad Mullins. Good evening, Mayor Najarian, council members. I'm actually really excited tonight that I have a group of students that have come all the way from Egypt to come and visit us here in Glendale and see how we hold our council meetings and talk a little bit about our government in Glendale. They have been attending Glendale College. And with us tonight is Jewel Pierce. She's the Dean of Student Services. She's going to talk about the program and how important the program was for these students to learn about our government and learn about our country. And this is-
Why is that so happy?
Well, because I finally have somebody from my country that I get to speak Arabic with. This was very thrilling, and it was an experience just sitting in the room with them for an hour, speaking in Arabic and talk about our government. So it was very exciting.
Wonderful.
So if I don't, if I can call Jewel.
Good evening, and thank you for having us here, Mayor Najarian, City Council mayors and community members. My pleasure to be here this evening representing Glendale Community College and our international student program, but this is a particularly special program. For the past year, Glendale College has participated in a national program known as the Community College Initiative for Egypt. This program is sponsored and funded by the United States Department of State, that's Hillary Clinton's outfit, and also the Bureau of Educational and Cultural Affairs, and in California, the Foundation for California Community Colleges. There are over 600 students from Egypt studying in the United States. 100 of those students are in California, and there are 10 community colleges participating. The students were selected in Egypt by the Fulbright Commission. I know you've all heard of the Fulbright Commission, and most commonly, they sponsor a lot of graduate education, bring students over, but they wanted to do an educational program in which students participated and learned in community colleges. We have 10 students here at Glendale. There are 10 community colleges in California participating, and the idea was to select working professionals in Egypt. Some of our students have bachelor's degrees, but they've been working in specialized professional areas. The idea was to send them to the United States, have them study their field in community colleges, do internships as part of that program, and bring all that knowledge back home to Egypt. This whole program was funded by the federal government as part of their aid package to Egypt. So the students have done internships in some of our businesses here in Glendale, most particularly Porto's Bakery. We have a culinary arts baker in our group. At the Hilton Hotel, some of our students are studying hotel-restaurant management, and some of them did an internship at Los Angeles Children's Hospital because they're studying biomedical equipment. We've been very proud to have these students here. Their ages range from age 22 to 30 years old, and we've tried to expose them to a number of cultural activities along with their full-time studies. They're here on a J visa basis as visiting scholars, and so I'd like to ask the students to stand and let me introduce them. So we have Mohammed Basir. He's currently chefing and interning at the Four Seasons Hotel in Beverly Hills.
All right, very good.
So he's learning really cuisine there because he's done that in his home. Mohammed Kasem is our resident artist, graphic artist. Asma Madani. Mohammed Mahdi. Ahmed Morsi. Ismaan. Ahmed Al-Dubaki. Aitham Kadir. Etad Fami. Mohammed El-Morsi. Is that everyone?
Yes.
And they'll be returning to Egypt respectively after final exams and what have you at Glendale College, June 15 and June 17. Thank you very much for accommodating us this evening.
Thank you very much, and welcome, students, to Glendale. I know you've had a great term at GCC, and we hope that you learned a little bit about our, the way we operate businesses and perform civic duties, and I'm sorry I couldn't meet with you earlier. One-on-one, we had a series of rather lengthy meetings, which is, I guess, part of something to learn about as well. We take care of business, especially in the city of Glendale. We don't shirk. So, thank you, and I hope you enjoy the rest of your stay. Mr. Weaver.
Just have one question. What happens when you call out Mohammed? Which one responds? You know, there's so many, the same first name. Never, how common is that, Suzanne? Mohammed, is that the most common name in Egypt?
Yes, Mr. Quintero.
Nothing. Congratulations, first of all, for getting chosen. I can imagine how competitive it must have been to get these slots, so that tells me right off the bat they're very intelligent people, so, anyway, I hope you enjoyed your stay, and Ms. Mullins has talked about Cairo and about Egypt so much, I feel like I've already been there. I think I, so, when I do visit, I'm sure I'm going to feel very, very comfortable in that beautiful city. Welcome to Glendale.
You know, Mr. Weaver, that the Egyptians were some of the world's first and finest engineers, so being a civil engineer of yourself, maybe you can learn something from them.
How many of you in engineering?
Nobody.
You built the pyramids!
Well, they were super. Yes, there's a good word. Thank you very much. Anything else, Ms. Ayad or Ms. Price? Thank you for coming forward again.
Thank you.
Ms. Mullins.
I'm sorry. I failed to introduce my colleague, who's helped me tremendously in working with the students.
You can come to the-
Jeanette Sturdivant.
Come to the microphone and say hello, Ms. Sturdivant.
Say hello.
Where's your, where's your husband?
Okay. Thank you very much. Let's move on to the next item.
Mr. Mayor and Council, next item is City Council and Staff Comments.
Mr. Weaver.
Do you all want to leave, or are you going to stick around for this? Before we get going, I thought maybe, if they want to see government in action, they can stay here. Oh, okay. Two things. One, I forgot last week to say what I did wrong two weeks ago. When we were having that appeal on the bakery, and I said, you know, we ought to try to take over all the integrated waste there, and I kept saying Water and Power instead of Public Works. The next day, I'm driving to work, and I says, wait, I said Water and Power, not Public Works. So I apologized to all the Public Works employees for putting them into the Water and Power Department. So I did what I said I would do. The other thing that I'd like staff to look at, at the Bob Hope Airport Commission meeting on, yesterday, we had an item on the agenda, and when we approved it unanimously, I said I was going to bring it to the City Council as a suggestion. We approved an automated external defibrillator.
Defibrillator.
Yeah, that's a good one. Something I didn't know, they gave some statistics, and they said if this defibrillator is applied within three minutes of a person having a heart attack, it was 90 percent survival rate. Now even our fire departments take approximately four minutes to get there. So the airport authority has, sounds good. So the airport authority is purchasing over 30 of them to be scattered around the airport. Employees can volunteer to learn it. A kid could do it. It's a small kit, pulls out, it tells you what to do, and you take it off the wall, whatever, and you can give that. It's, uh, sounds like great, not expensive. They're purchasing 31 of them for $58,000, only a couple thousand apiece. And I thought you might check with the airport authority and see if it's worth to have some of those scattered around the city buildings, which just possibly could save somebody's life someday. If we could bring a report back or whatever.
We'll do that. Our fire department's actually looked into that before, and I know, I think they're actually updating some recommendations relative to that.
These are small, tiny ones, they're good. Thank you.
Follow-up then.
Mr. Weaver.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'm sure, I'm not telling, like anybody on the dais, anything they don't know, but this was the week for the recon, the ICSC Convention, International Conference of Shopping Centers Conference, which is the second, or at least always was, the second-largest convention or conference held in Las Vegas after the Home Electronics, Computer and Electronics Convention. In any case, some of your council members were there, I was there, but because of lateness of the hour, I'm going to take an opportunity next week to talk about some of the things I saw and experienced there, and would like to try to bring back to the city of Glendale.
Thank you. We'll take you up on that offer. Ms. Friedman.
Just a few things. It was a very busy week here in Glendale. Last week, I attended the opening at Forest Lawn Gallery of the Francisco Goya Etchings exhibit. This is a traveling exhibit of some note, featuring works by Goya, who most people, most art historians consider to be the first modern architect, oh, sorry, modern artist. And it's a really fascinating and interestingly curated exhibition, and I recommend that anybody who has any interest go see it. But I also just wanted to remind people about the Forest Lawn Gallery, because it's really quite a fine museum, and they take a lot of pride in the exhibits that they bring through there, and it's a wonderful resource for the city of Glendale. This particular opening was open to the public, it was a catered reception, and it was just a really wonderful and very well-attended event, and a great service that they do for the community. So if you haven't ever been up to the Forest Lawn Gallery, it's a beautiful, beautiful spot up on the top of the hill, and the exhibit is first-rate, could easily be at any of the major museums around Los Angeles, but it's here in Glendale, so I recommend that everybody go. I think it'll be up for another month or two, and it's a great exhibit. Also, last weekend was the Great American Cleanup, which was done citywide through Glendale Clean and Beautiful and several of our other groups, and people came out and volunteered from all across the community to clean up, to help property owners who weren't able to maintain their property, to do all kinds of projects. The one that was, I wanted to particularly call out, was at the Kiwanis Club of Glendale, Kiwanis International, spent the day installing our second community garden on Monterey Road. They weren't able to do the entire build-out in one day as they had hoped. They're hoping that this will be a model kind of like Habitat for Humanity, with all through volunteer labor and knowing what they need in advance, they can have an entire garden for the community installed in a day, but they came close. They did a whole bunch of the planter beds and dug a lot of holes and put a lot of sweat equity in. And just tying a couple of different events together, I participated in the Glendale Historic Society's Historic Bike Tour that they did in conjunction with the L.A. Bike Coalition through our own Colin Bogart, and we had about 45 to 50 people show up, and we went to tour all of the historic parks around Glendale, and one of our stops was at the, at the community garden. So we got to go and ride in on our 45 bikes and see all the volunteers, and Sam Engel from Neighborhood Services came and gave us a little talk about what they were doing and how it was all being done through volunteers on city-owned property that's been vacant for about 40 years in a flood plain, and it was a lot of fun. So I wanted to thank the Glendale Historic Society, Arlene V. Dorr and Scott Lowe, who led the tour, and Colin Bogart from the L.A. Bike Coalition for everything that he does in the community. And it was a wonderful event, and I'm sure that we'll continue to do more, and I'll also say that several of the people on the event told me that they either hadn't been to Glendale in a long time, or in a few cases, had never been to Glendale, and they were very, very impressed and just really happy to get to see the community and get to see the city in such a wonderful way, through pedal power and on our streets, up close and personal. So thanks to everyone who participated in all of those three various events. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You, Mr. Quintero.
Just to recommend to our friends from Egypt that you see Goya. It'll make you want to visit Spain. You'll feel very, very comfortable there in the Prado in Spain.
Thank you, and I just have one comment. I would like everyone to know that the 710 Tunnel issue is coming to the MTA Board this Thursday, May 27. It is coming forth with a motion by a representative from the San Gabriel Valley to move forward with the tunnel process by commencing the EIR study. Many of us are against it in an attempt to make sure that the proper studies are done before the tunnel is started along with the EIR process. I have made a competing motion, it's an amendment to that motion, which spells out all the different steps that the MTA and Caltrans should take and must take before the tunnel EIR is started. Number one, looking at alternate routes, not just geographical routes, but different modes of transportation as well, and to conduct a cost-benefit ratio to see if those types of alternate modes and routes are more cost-effective than the tunnel, and also to reach out to the communities to conduct a scoping analysis where different communities can give their input as to what type of project they would like to see. So my motion should not be interpreted as a support for the tunnel, but a logical next step to make sure that if the opponents of the tunnel are in any way mistaken or misunderstanding the benefits which some of the proponents claim, that that evidence and that information and those facts can come out, and we can hold a reasonable discussion as to the best way to move forward. It would be open to the public. Everyone is permitted one minute to speak. We're not as generous at the MTA as we are here in City Council, but it's going to be a heck of a meeting, but I want everyone to know that that meeting is not the end-all to the tunnel. There will be many other meetings, there may be other challenges, and the intent of the council, through a majority vote, is to fight this tunnel, and that is exactly what we are going to do. And my message to the MTA Board and to everyone else is that we will not stop fighting until this tunnel is properly studied and vetted, and not to spend $1 on any EIR until the facts are before the community and we can discuss it. Okay, any comments from staff? Okay, let's move on, please.
Mr. Mayor and Council, next on the agenda is Consent Items. At 5:00, the following will be routine and may be acted upon by one motion, any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
Mayor, consent calendar at 5:00.
Thank you. If there's no discussion, let's take roll.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Aaron Najarian.
Yes. Next item.
Next item would be Oral Communications.
Thank you. I have several cards. This is the three-minute section of Oral Communications, and I'd like to call up Salpi Akaragian, followed by Colin Bogart, and then Leon Mayer. To remind everyone, Salpi Akaragian is my cousin. It was a, well, tell us what you are, Salpi.
Great.
At UCLA, and you're in the nursing.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Ara Najarian and council members. As Ara said, I work at UCLA Medical Center as one of the administrators, but I'm here today to make an announcement on behalf of the Armenian International Medical Fund. The foundation, which has been around almost now six years, provides cochlear implant surgeries for the children in Armenia, and we're very proud to announce that as of today, we have done 34 surgeries, on which every single one of them have been successful, 100 percent success rate. All these children that you see in the picture here, and this is only a sample, all of them have been operated, and they have able to hear, speak, go to school, and the three young gentlemen that we operated not too long ago, they're back to their routine life and work. So our announcement tonight has to do with a fundraiser that's coming up in about a couple of weeks, which is June 6, and this is one of the ways we raise funds, as difficult, as you know, to raise money for this type of a project. So we are very thankful. Every year, we've been able to come and inform, you inform the public about our work in Armenia. The work actually is in the collaboration of UCLA Medical Center, the Armenian Government, Ministry of Health, the Armenian community in Glendale, Burbank, all over the place, as well as internationally. So we have five children waiting for the surgeries in November, and we will be opening Armenian Ear Center so we can begin training the new young, if I want to call that, the physicians, to learn how to do these implant surgeries. In addition, besides these ambitious programs, we will be studying neurosurgery in November, where Dr. Lazar, those of you who know him, will be going to Armenia with us to begin that new project. Thank you.
And where's the event again, Salpi?
Event is at the Castaway in Burbank this time. Yes, we will be going to Burbank, and it's on June 6 at 5:30, and 6:30, the program will begin. And we are hoping to teleconference with, live teleconference with the children, where the public actually will see the outcomes, where the children will be speaking to the audience through the video conferencing. Okay, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Colin Bogart, followed by Leon Mayer.
Mayor Najarian, council members, city staff, good evening. My name is Colin Bogart, I'm with the Los Angeles County Bicycle Coalition, working on the Safe and Healthy Streets Project here in Glendale. I'm here tonight to announce the final event for Bike Month here in Glendale, but really quickly, before I do that, I wanted to make sure to acknowledge all the help that we had in making this month's events as successful as it's been. In particular, I want to thank Community Services and Parks Department for helping us with reserving Chess Park for the history rides. Traffic and Transportation took care of parking for us so that everybody who came to those rides could park in the orange street structure for free, and then enjoy lunch and perhaps do a little shopping after the rides were over. Glendale Historical Society, of course, was a big help in both of the rides. I'd like to acknowledge the City of Glendale's Ride Share Program, which helped made Bike to Work Day a big success out in front of City Hall last Thursday morning, and I especially want to give thanks to the library, the Glendale Library, who basically let us use their auditorium multiple times this month. They were incredibly generous, and we really appreciate that. And with that, speaking of the Glendale Central Library, tomorrow evening, at the Central Library and Auditorium, we'll be welcoming Charlie Gandy. Charlie is the Mobility Coordinator for the City of Long Beach, and he's a person who's spearheading all the great work that they are doing there, and he's going to be doing a presentation that we're essentially calling Making Long Beach Bike Friendly and what it means for Glendale. Essentially, he's going to talk about what they're doing and how it relates to Glendale, and really how what they're doing in Long Beach goes beyond just Long Beach and Glendale and can be applied to just about any community. Charlie Gandy is a widely-recognized person in sustainability and livable communities. He's a really entertaining, dynamic, and insightful speaker, and I highly recommend that you and the community attend this event if you possibly can. He is going to be coming here early in the day tomorrow to sort of have a look around Glendale, and we're going to take some photos, and he's, his goal is to incorporate some ideas that he thinks might work in Glendale, just to kind of whet your appetites. So this will be tomorrow evening at the Central Library, 7:00 PM, in the auditorium. The event is free and open to the public. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Najarian, members of the council and staff, my name is Leon Mayer, and I'm first here to represent the Chamber of Commerce to notify the people of Glendale, the citizens of Glendale, the friends of Glendale, to come to the Memorial Day Services Monday morning, 9:30, right next door at the memorial that we have in Glendale. It's going to be, it's always a terrific program. Judy Kendall, Larry Zari, and they pour their heart and soul into the program, as well as Phil Cazangio, my friend, and the feature speaker, the keynote speaker is going to be a gentleman by the name of Paul Ignatius. And Paul Ignatius, now I'm going to talk about the library, because I'm here on behalf of the Glendale Library and the friends of the library. Paul Ignatius is not only going to be the keynote speaker at the memorial service, but he's going to be the speaker at the library the day before at 3 o'clock, the doors will open at 2:30, to talk about his book onboard, My Life in the Navy and Government and- Government and Business. Now, Paul Ignatius was born in Glendale in 1920. He's born of Armenian descent. His family escaped the massacres of 1895, and enough of his family got here to set their roots. And they started in Pittsburgh, and they came to Southern California and Glendale in 1904. Talking about leadership, and I'd like to thank Arti Kasakian for that beautiful prayer he gave us, invocation. I thought that was really touching, especially for the things I'm going to talk about and what we're going to talk about on Monday. But in any event, Paul Ignatius went to Hoover High School, became a class president, student body president, member of the tennis team, went on to USC with honors, graduated there, started Harvard, but he was interrupted by the war. He joined the Navy, became an officer, served in the Battle of the Lady Gulf as an aircraft officer, aircraft carrier escort officer. His ship was hit by kamikaze planes, and he is remembered for what he did during World War II. In fact, the Filipino community is going to be behind him on Sunday. They're going to be there honoring him for what he did during the war. But when he got through the war, he went back to Harvard, got his business administration degree, went on and joined government. And in government, he rose. I can give you the steps, but that'll take too much time. We can talk about.
We'd like to hear it from him, Mr. Mayor. You know, you're giving us this whole story.
It's all in the book. But he became Secretary of the Navy, and after a career as Secretary of the Navy, he became the President of the Washington Post Newspaper, and then he became President of the Air Transport Association. And just tremendous Alger.
Horatio Alger.
Horatio Alger story. Tremendous. And we hope that the students from Glendale College, from Egypt, are able to, some of them are able to make this event. It's free to the public. There'll be refreshments served. The book will be on sale. And I can't say too much about, we're honored, both as the keynote speaker at the memorial service, but as to have him at the library to talk about his book, On Board: My Life in the Navy, the Government and Business. So please, if you can make it Sunday, the doors will open at 2:00. Please come, we'll see you there.
2:00. Very good. Thank you. Thank you very much. What do we have next, Mr. Kasakian? I don't have any other cards, so I will close this part of oral communications.
No other cards for that portion of oral communications, but we will return to it. At 7:00, under Adoption of Ordinances, at 7A is an ordinance authorizing and approving a lease of real property to Trader Joe's Company, a California corporation. This was offered on May 18, 2010, by Councilmember Draymond.
Mr. Draymond.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to, I'm sorry, I would like to move the item at 7A.
Second. Thank you. Any other discussion? Mr. Quintero.
To say how happy I am that we're voting on this tonight. I think Trader Joe's is going to be a great, great addition to Montrose. Looking forward to shopping there. And congratulations all around.
Thank you. Let's take roll call.
Councilmembers Draymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Montero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Aaron Najarian?
Yes.
At 8:00, under Action Items, 8A is Director of Information Services regarding recommendation to approve a contract with AT&amp;T via State of California Master Services Agreement, CalNet 2, for telephone services for two years with the option to renew. At 8A1 is a resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and approving an agreement with AT&amp;T.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move 8A1.
Mr. Howard.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, that would be as modified. There is a minor typographical error on page two that's being corrected.
Very nice. As modified.
As modified, and seconded as modified. Are there any discussion questions or comments?
Is this replacing our T-Mobile contract?
No. This is the landlines.
I see, okay.
At a more favorable price than previously obtained.
It's always good to get a more favorable price.
Roll call, please. Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Montero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Aaron Najarian?
Yes.
Now, return to oral communications, where discussion is limited to items not part of this agenda. Speaker is allowed five minutes now. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there'll be no debate or decision, and City Manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Thank you. I have several cards. Robert Buniatien, followed by Robert Mufsesian.
Good evening, council members. My name is Robert Buniatien. I'm a resident of Glendale, and I have a prepared statement which I'd like to read. I'll start off by a quote from Thomas Sowell, and his quote starts with, "It takes considerable knowledge just to realize the extent of your own ignorance." For my explanation of why life seems to get more difficult by the day in Glendale, I will try to pick on Councilwoman Friedman. I consider Councilwoman Friedman as a planner, or in other words, as a social engineer. I have no doubt that her pursuit of becoming a council member was based on the best of intentions. Her goal is the same as most residents of Glendale, to make life better for the residents in Glendale. But the ultimate end for every individual to what Glendale should look like is wholly subjective to that particular individual, and Councilwoman Friedman is no different. She has concocted an image of what Glendale should be and endorses policies that move Glendale to fit her own perfect view of Glendale. To reach this end state of Glendale, Councilwoman Friedman would have to think of humans as chess pieces, where she could move them as she wants, so her planned view of Glendale becomes reality. In other words, she has to be omniscient. After all, this is the only manner in which she could efficiently organize the individual and subjective human actions of 200,000-plus residents. The reason why planned economies, and Glendale is one, and social engineers ultimately fail in their pursuit of euphoric place is that in the case of Glendale, there are 200,000 residents who have a different subjective view of how they want to live. The world is basically run by the individuals' pursuit of their own self-interest. Councilwoman Friedman's interests are not everyone's interests, and with all due respect, she does not know what everyone's self-interests are either. The irony is that all the planning that Glendale does, all the intervention in the market economy has led Glendale to a much different place than the intent of the planners. The planned economy of Glendale has brought Glendale to be a welfare city, a city promoting dependency and incentivizing fraud. All the planning has led the residents of Glendale to ask the question, why is it that my $100 today just does not go as far as the $100 five years ago? Of course, the solution to this problem from the planners is to have bigger and better plans. The only reason that their plans failed in the past is because they were not, quote unquote, "good enough." It does not enter into the planner's mind, and in this case, Councilwoman Friedman's mind, that it is planning itself from social engineers that has made life much more difficult than it has to be. Councilwoman Friedman, the question is not whether we want a bike path or green regulations or luscious parks. The question is whether the individual residents of Glendale value the bike path, the green regulations, and luscious parks as a more urgent want than any other alternative subjective wants, that they would voluntarily pay the direct and indirect cost of these programs while curtailing other alternatives for their money, in particular, either saving, other expenditures, or investment. I will end my prepared statement from a quote from Adam Smith, from his lesser of the known books called Theory of Moral Sentiment. Quote, "He does not consider that the pieces upon the chessboard have no other principal motion besides that which the hand impresses upon them, but that in the great chessboard of human society, every single piece has a principle of motion of its own, altogether different from that which the legislature might choose to impress upon it." As I end my prepared statement, I'd like to offer a challenge to the council members. I challenge them to either a private or a public conversation that they could offer their logical reasoning that states that all their intervention in the Glendale economy, in the free-market economy, actually betters the lives of the individual Glendale members. I could think of in three cases, housing, where all the intervention in the housing markets, all it does is just makes housing much more expensive than it has to be, which of course makes life much more tougher than it has to be for the individuals. And in the second case, all the, quote unquote, affordable housing, it has very much downsides to it that are not, an indirect downsides to it that are not considered when legislature is passed with the council members. I'd like to thank you for hearing us. My contact is on the card, so if you could, I'm free to go.
Thank you. Robert Mufsesian, followed by Scott Peir.
Good evening, Mayor, dear council members, staff. I got emotional when I saw on TV those three moms who visited their sons and daughters jailed in Iran. Then I got emotional again when I remembered our sons and daughters killed and injured, over 40,000 of them, and over 3 million Iraqis were killed, injured, or displaced. They had moms too. These atrocities were caused by numero uno and numero dos. The innocent people mentioned above had moms too, no matter what religion or race. Moms everywhere have the same feelings about their sons and daughters, friend or foe. I never been a mom, but I know what my mom went through to raise us. This is my Bible. This is the truth. Whatever is in here is the truth. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Scott Peir, followed by Bill Weisman.
I'm sorry, the name of the book is Through the Wall of Fire.
Thank you, Mr. Peir, and then Bill Weisman.
Good evening, I'm Scott Peir, and thank you for listening. I'm here to talk about solar energy. City Attorney was informed on April 27th that the city is not complying with my Public Records Act request for information on solar system permits. Rather than take corrective action, the City Attorney's Office is continuing the cover-up of the City Solar Rights Act violations. This follows other instances where they've covered up important information, such as when they claimed the legislative intent was not clear, in spite of the fact that the second sentence of the law states the intent, failure to mention several key items in the legislative history, such as the inclusion of Glendale zoning code, and the fact that government code 65850.5 passed the Assembly on a 77-to-0 vote. To add to the cover-up, the City Attorney's Office is now preparing a confidential report, which we could guess will describe how they intend to continue breaking the law. It's safe to say that this is just the tip of the iceberg. City Attorney's Office has spent over a year and a half demonstrating their content for the law. As President Nixon discovered, breaking the law is a mistake, but worse is breaking the law and then attempting to cover it up. Besides the issues of breaking the law and trying to cover it up, there are other reasons to stop the City Attorney from further work on the confidential report on solar energy. The report has no value in any case, because the City Council could correct the zoning code without City Attorney or Planning Commission involvement, since the California Deputy Attorney General Deborah Sloan already recommended planning option one on February 9th. Planning completed their changes last year. All that needs to be done is to approve them. The state law does not allow cities to pretend that their bureaucracy is incapable of responding to the law. The later laws were in fact directed at cities like Glendale that opposed widespread use of solar energy. Is preparing a confidential report for the purpose of continuing Glendale's illegal activities a good use of city resources at a time when the city is laying off teachers? Members of city legal staff make as much money as several teachers. They're wasting their time writing this report to justify the city's actions, which are breaking state law, denying citizens our right to install solar systems, charging residents thousands of dollars in variance fees to which the city is not entitled, and increasing the very pollution that causes asthma in children and cancer in their parents. This whole thing is completely unnecessary. There's nothing to fear in solar energy. It's popular for a good reason, and it's widely used elsewhere. Glendale does not have to fight against it. We could be like the City of Berkeley. I talked to Neil Desnoue in the City of Berkeley Office of Energy and Sustainable Development. He told me Berkeley stopped applying zoning code to solar system years ago due to the state law. Their website states, and I quote, "Solar projects do not require zoning permits or design review," in parentheses, "California State Code, Section 65850.5," end quote. He was matter-of-fact about it. He basically said, "That's the law." Since February 2007, residents of Berkeley have installed 745 solar systems. Their population's 102,000, about half of Glendale's, so their per capita rate is about eight times Glendale's for solar system installation. The city was incorporated in 1878. They have many old homes that don't comply with the current setback. So a lot of the solar systems don't comply with zoning, although they don't track how many, so he didn't give me a number. They do get a few complaints about solar systems. I was actually surprised by that. But they shrug them off because it's state law. So if somebody complains, they say, "Sorry, can't do anything, state law." That's it, too bad. They go away. So in other words, Glendale could comply with the law, stop blocking solar systems from the zoning rules. The result would be more solar systems installed, less pollution, and a few complaints that are easily dismissed. All that needs to be done is for the City Council to follow the recommendation of the State Deputy Attorney General.
Thank you. Bill Weisman, followed by Lenore Solis.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff, and the public. My name's Bill Weisman, resident of Glendale, and I'm not here on quite as serious a subject tonight as other speakers. I just wanted to mention that there's some very visible graffiti on a ridge above the mountain off-ramp to the Glendale Freeway. There's a house under construction up on the ridgeline at 2025 Park Mount. And I imagine because of city code having to do with construction sites, the construction site has a fence around it with an opaque covering to hide the construction from view. Unfortunately, because it sits on a steep slope, a 56% slope, according to what I was able to find out, the fence is not providing the function of screening out the construction site. And right now, there are some five-foot-tall, you know, giant graffiti letters on it. And the only reason I bring this up before you is because of the fact that it's kind of a really egregious example of an eyesore that's visible to traffic, both on the northbound and on the southbound freeway. We first noticed it on Friday night, and I did send an email to Neighborhood Services, and I did receive an acknowledgement from them yesterday. So I know they're aware of it, but just because of the fact that it is so kind of out there and obvious and brazen, I thought I would mention it tonight and hope we can expedite getting it removed. And really, all they would have to do was just take the covering off that fence. If it was just bare chain link, it would still serve a purpose of security, but not be a canvas for graffiti. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did staff get the address? Okay.
Lenore Solis.
Good evening. I'm here about the signage on the corner of Brand and San Fernando. You put up some wonderful directional signs directing people to all different areas of Glendale, but you forgot to put the sign up that tells people where Glendale Boulevard is. So I don't know if you're just not going to do it, but I've been coming here for about five years now, complaining about the fact that, and Mr. Weaver has acknowledged that he's aware that this is a problem, and some others of you have also. he's aware that this is a problem, and some others of you have also acknowledged that because there's Glendale Avenue and Glendale Boulevard, some people are not aware that Glendale, and then on the corner of Brand and San Fernando, it doesn't say Glendale Boulevard. It starts like a block down, so most people get confused. And so you put up these wonderful signs that look terrific, but there's nothing for Glendale Boulevard, or even that says LA is that way. So I mean, I don't know if, I mean, if we need to pay for that on our own in Little Atwater Village, or what we need to do. But I saw those signs go up, and I thought, wow! And then I'm like, well, what happened? So I don't know how much it costs. I don't know if money's the issue. I don't know what it is. But whatever it is, let me know so we can try to resolve it and get something up there. Because on the corner of Brand and San Fernando, it says, "Brand and San Fernando." Who's going to know if they don't know that Glendale Boulevard is a block down south? Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards for oral communications, so I will close oral communications and open it up to comments. Start with Mr. Weaver.
Two quickies. One, as far as I know, the city of Glendale isn't laying off teachers. The school district is an independent entity. We have nothing to do with the school district in any way, shape, or form. Secondly, that fence up there is probably for debris coming down the hill not to lay in the people's yards below. If you take the screen off, even material could get through the chain link. And all we need is people down below saying they have broken windows or something because of debris coming down. That's my best guess on that.
Thank you. Ms. Friedman.
Yeah. I would like to see the peers get their solar installations sooner rather than later. I think a lot of people would. I certainly don't think there's any conspiracy, personally, I don't think there's any conspiracy against solar power in Glendale. Mr. Hagani, where are we in this process? Can we just get this ball moving?
It is actually moving. Nobody is against solar power in Glendale. In fact, we do allow a lot of different types of solar panels, and this discussion is being vetted by the Planning Commission. They've had an in-depth discussion about it so far already. Mr. Peir has been aware of that and has been present in the Planning Commission meeting. The Planning Commission has directed staff to bring additional information on this particular issue. We completely are committed to abiding by the law. We have no intention of not abiding by the law, and we are supportive of solar panels. It's the matter of interpretation of this particular law, and different cities interpret it differently, and we are working very closely with the Planning Commission. We'll come to you with some recommendations once the Planning Commission has completed their deliberation on this, and they have a recommendation for you.
And do we know, is this waiting for their next meeting? Do we have any idea?
Yes, it is waiting for their next meeting. It has been scheduled once, but their schedule happened to be very full that night, and they continued it. So it's going to be discussed and completed with some recommendations. And it's a complicated matter, and it's really about solar panels versus solar panels and other things that could be done in addition to solar panels. And that's really the bulk of the item. We have ways to install solar panels legally without a lot of hassle through the permit process.
Thank you.
Other comments? There's no other comments. I believe we have some new business?
There is.
Okay. I would like to move that the city attorney be and hereby is authorized to enter into a retainer agreement with the Margulis Law Firm, Craig Margulis, to assist the city attorney in currently pending bankruptcy matters. The retainer agreement shall, in addition to other provisions, contain a fee cap for work as assigned by the city attorney.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Draymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Aaron Najarian.
Yes.
Mr. Draymond.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council duly authorize the city attorney's office to initiate legal action. The defendant or defendants and other particulars may be disclosed upon inquiry unless to do so will impact the ability to affect service process.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Draymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Aaron Najarian.
Yes.
I believe that concludes our new business. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
We're adjourned.